It's a chair.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. I am Mitch Cole and I chair the North Row Board of Selectmen. I will call to order the Board of Selectmen meeting of Monday, February twenty seventh, two thousand twenty-three. I have some introductory remarks as I do every meeting where we post on Zoom. Uh, this meeting, uh, this open meeting of North Row Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely consistent with the July sixteen, two thousand twenty-two act relative to extending certain COVID nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency. All members of the North Row Border Selectmen are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. This order allows the North Row Board of Selectmen to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded. So that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who view wish to view the live stream of the meeting may do so by going to Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link posted on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. I will now confirm that members of the board can uh be seen and heard. Um, let's see, just in order as everyone is appearing on my screen, Scott Rogers.
Present.
Jason Bro.
Present.
Julianne Hirsch.
Present.
Christian Wixted did let us know that due to a family commitment, she was unable to um make the meeting tonight. Um, we have several important staff members present again in order as I see people on my screen. We have Fire Chief Dave Parenti.
Present.
Thank you. Uh, Town Administrator John Kader.
Present.
Assistant Town Administrator Becca Meekins.
Present.
DPW Director Scott Charpentier.
Present.
Police Chief Bill Lever.
Present.
We also have Northborough Cable with us for technical support. Um, and let's begin the meeting as always. First uh item on our agenda is public comment. If any members of the public wish to comment on anything. Primarily anything uh not related to agenda items, please raise your virtual Zoom hand and I will recognize you. Not seeing anything going once. Going twice. Okay, no public input at the start of the meeting. That's fine. Approval of meeting minutes is our first agenda item. Is there a motion or any discussion?
Mister Chairman, I move the board vote to approve the January twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Julianne.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Jason.
Aye.
I also vote aye. Vote is unanimous in favor. The meeting minutes are approved. Thank you very much. Next up is we have the review of the preliminary town meeting warrant summary. John, you want to uh give us a quick walkthrough?
Sure. So at this point in the uh town meeting prep, uh, we're just trying to get all of the articles compiled, but I had given you in your packet is just the summary listing. But just to kind of walk you through the the general sense of how things are shaping up. Uh, overall, at this stage, we're looking at uh fifty-one, fifty-two articles if you want to include reports, although in twenty years, I've never seen anybody give a report at the end of town meeting. Uh, so fifty-one articles, actionable articles. Um, it's you weren't structured the standard way. Uh, the first uh, the first um approximately twelve articles are the uh uh budgets of the various uh components, the water sewer, town, Assabit, Algonquin, K-8 school. And then we have our stabilization contribution and the emergency reserve account. Uh, beginning article thirteen, uh, we have an appropriation of the opioid settlement funds. So this is something new this year. As you know, we participated in the settlements for the um um, for the opioids. Uh, the town has money that we have received and is continuing to receive. It's actually a second round of settlements that are coming through that we're participating in. So uh, we don't know. Uh, we don't have all the details on that yet, but the long and short of it is, uh, we did request the MMA Mass Municipal Association requested that uh the state approve uh special revenue account so we can segregate these funds because they have to be used uh in compliance with the settlement agreements. Um, because the state did not approve the creation of a special revenue account. Uh, what uh what's being recommended is that these funds that came in that they be placed into a uh a separate warrant article. Uh, it doesn't necessarily uh mean they're being appropriated to for use, but it sets them aside. Um, so that's what we're going to do this time through. Hopefully in the next cycle, the uh, the um Division of Local Services, Department of Revenue will will approve. Actually, they're the ones that also recommended the uh special revenue account. But again, the legislature failed to act on that in time. So uh, so that money is just being segregated at this point. Um, Article fourteen uh is senior tax relief. This was something that was requested uh to uh for us to look into. At your next meeting, the Finance Director will be here. Um, specifically, we're talking about um amendments to uh Mass General Law, Chapter fifty-nine, Section five, Clause forty-one A. This is the deferred taxes. Um, so we were asked to look at maybe increasing the income eligibility uh components of that. Uh, so we put a placeholder on town meeting warrant for that. From there, you have Article fifteen through twenty-four. Those are the capital budget articles. So these are the uh items the that will be funded or request funding at town meeting for uh various equipment, uh building and uh capital related. Article twenty-five is the Al- Algonquin Athletic Complex article. So because that is the regional high school, it's not part of our town of Northborough capital budget. But yet it is a large capital project. But that will be requiring a rather unique process has to be approved by both South Burrows, um, town meeting as well as North Burrows. Uh, the regional high school would be the issuing authority for any associated debt. So for us, it's a simple majority. But that article is on there as well. Um, Article twenty-six is the uh thirteenth Church Street easement on your agenda today. Uh, later on this evening is a temporary memorandum of agreement for that easement. It does ultimately need approval from town meeting. So uh, that will finish buttoning up that uh issue. Article twenty-seven is changing of the Board of Selectmen to the Select Board. Article twenty-eight is getting uh removing the residency requirement of the town administrator. Twenty-nine is the consolidated personnel bylaw. These are the wage increases. Um, it's formulaic process through the personnel uh through the personnel bylaw, the non-union folks get the average union contract. So it's just updating that that schedule. And then Article thirty through uh thirty-five are the Community Preservation Fund um articles that are coming forward, that the committee has brought forward. Um, then Article uh thirty-six is an amendment to the town code which uh eliminates the um or modifies the earth removal uh bylaw. And then Article thirty-seven through fifty uh are fourteen zoning amendments that are being proposed. Uh, my understanding is the planning board is still going through the hearing process. Some it's still being finalized. Uh, and then last but not least, Article fifty-one is acceptance of uh Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-nine, Section twenty-three D. This is proposed by the Planning Director Lori Connors. It allows um, allows a planning board uh member or a board member to participate in deliberation, vote on something if they've missed a meeting. Basically because they were able to view the meeting, view all of the documents and records date. It eliminates the issue of us uh of us uh not being able to move forward because somebody had a family emergency or missed a meeting. Uh, not being able to vote on the family meeting. So she's proposed that to move forward. And that in a nutshell is uh are the fifty-one articles that are before you. I did not place anything on here uh regarding or pertaining to White Cliffs at this point. Um, it's based on discussions. It does not appear that that's going to be uh ready to move forward uh for town meeting uh given the the state of the review of that uh potential reuse. Um, so otherwise that those are the warrant articles just listed out at your next meeting on the thirteenth. We'll have uh the full warrant for your review. Uh, the board will also vote on March thirteenth to close the warrant. And basically that's saying, these are the articles that are moving forward to town meeting. And then the balance of time is spent developing those, sending the town council for uh for their ultimate review. And then um uh, the warrant will be posted uh by April tenth in accordance with town code. Um, and uh, and that just gives us time staff to flush out the balance of the uh the wording and so forth. Um, but not a bad town meeting. Um, you know, we've had longer, uh, but uh, but um, we've also had shorter. So I'm happy to answer any questions anybody has about the the summary list for the process moving forwards.
Julian.
Um, John, could you explain the earth removal? Removal.
Yeah, what we'll do is we'll have um once they're completed, the uh town planner will send uh a memo and can come in and do a quick presentation to the board if you'd like regarding all of the zoning uh changes. Um, I don't have that in in front of me at the moment and uh so I I I don't want to misspeak to it. Uh, but there's, as I said, there's including that one, there's sixteen uh bylaw amendments, seventeen bylaw amendments that are coming forward. So um, but you'll get a a summary uh report on that at your next meeting.
Okay, and um, one, one more question about that. Gosh, sorry. Um that it's I I I
You muted yourself. Just muted yourself by accident, I suspect.
Sorry. Um the the town meeting is not on the town calendar. I, as of a few days ago, can that be put on for people who are planning business trips and things like that?
Sure.
And also, um, you know, every year I bring this up that it'd be nice to do some serious advertising for town meeting. And this year I would like to propose that we have some of those signs like people use during election time. Just make enough that we can put them in front of municipal buildings. I'd like to know what um my fellow board members feel about that. I know that we always use the digital sign, you know, the big one on the truck, but but I also understand that that sometimes has to be used for other reasons, but if we could, if we could have some designated signs for town meeting. I think um, I think it shows shows that we want everybody to be there. And for a lot of people who haven't grown up here, they don't even know about town meeting. So that's my thought.
I like the idea in general of of promoting town meeting, uh, trying to get um attendance and participation up um, as well as looking for ways to lessen the burden for new participants from uh from understanding what's going on because sometimes it can be a little overwhelming. Your first time through or or think it will be overwhelming if even if it the end it is not. Probably a few things we could do in that regard.
So I could price out what it would cost to get twelve or fifteen signs, then come back up for the next meeting. Is that suitable to everyone?
Uh, Scott, you had your hand up.
I I was gonna ask from a budget perspective, yeah, where do you think you the money would come from and what staff member would be tasked to uh do this work?
Oh, I I don't, I don't think it would. It I it doesn't have to be.
Probably look, probably looking at a cou- a couple hundred dollars if we were to do this. I mean, I I would ask John to, you know, say, do we have a couple hundred dollars in a board of select an account that could be used for this? Certainly, there's money allocated for preparing for town meeting um, within all of the areas. I don't know. I haven't thought about this before now, but perhaps there's some funding, you know, available somewhere to do this.
I would also say that let's, let's look at ways to increase the information about town meeting without placing additional financial or work burdens on staff.
Yeah, it's just a matter of, you know, like when you run for office, you just go to Staples and get some some signs made. It's, uh, you know, I I'll run it by Andy Dowd and, you know, to make sure that it's all the correct information, but um, I I do tend to feel that the more we reach out to people, the better attendance will be, and a lot of important decisions are made there.
I guess my initial, you know, point is, you know, great, like as Mitch said, it's great to get the word out. Um, this seems to be like a a small thing and and if the intent is to really get more word out, I think there's other ways that it can be done. Um and everybody should know by now, you know, when when town meeting occurs, you see it in the town news. Uh, it's advertised in the newspapers. You get email blasts on it. But um, I I'm a little uncomfortable spending more money and tasking staff to go on on little tasks for us. I don't think we're here to task staff to do errands for us.
Yeah. Could the chair, if I may, let let me just, I'm assuming we're looking at municipal buildings. Let me take a look at it and um, I don't know what it would cost. I don't know what the sign, you know, I would think we'd want to make signs that um, can be reused every year. So it might say Fourth Monday and not the date. Otherwise, you're gonna have to throw them out and start again next year. Um, but uh, let me, let me look into that.
So Jason.
I think it probably goes without saying, but I'll say it anyway, that there are any number of uh social media uh groups where there are many eyeballs and uh and any notification about the timing of town meeting is going to reach a lot of people with very little effort. Um, if you happen to be a member in those groups, then it's easy enough to post something repeatedly to make people aware.
Hey, I I completely agree with that, Jason, yet somehow I run across people every year who don't know that town meeting has just occurred uh and everything else. So finding some other way of getting to people is probably a good idea. Um, I think this might be a different way of approaching it. But let's wait and see what uh what John comes back with and see if it makes some sense. Um, I I like the idea in general of of talking about ways of promoting town meeting participation um, better and, you know, we can find, I find additional ways to do that, not just, not just sign. That's something maybe we we have some conversations about, including with the town moderator, make sure um, we include him in the process. And so that's his meeting. Okay. Thank you, Julian. Any other questions on the draft warrant? I have one, John, the um Article forty-nine, you mentioned that we wouldn't have um, you know, at least we're not expecting to have White Cliffs related articles on there, but that's a White Cliffs zoning article. Is that something the planning board is considering putting forward for this town meeting or are you waiting to?
Yes, they're, they're looking at uh Lori, Lori Connors of the Planning Director had proposed uh a zoning change there right now without a zoning change. There's really not much that can be done there because the existing use is no longer grandfathered because it hasn't been, uh, it's been more than two years. So she had recommended that. Um, my understanding is the planning board is going to take that up and um I'm not sure what the status of that is. That's one I'm waiting on to to receive some communication regarding.
Great. Maybe um at our next meeting when we uh, as a board, talk about White Cliffs in some detail, maybe we can talk about that, that article. Um, Lori will obviously would be part of the discussion then anyway. She can let us know what the planning board is working on.
Okay.
Any other questions about the draft warrant? Okay, there's nothing that needs to get approved at this point, so we will move along. Um, Approval of Legislative Priorities Letter. John, at our last meeting, you presented a number of uh of draft items. We had a good discussion about them. You've assembled a letter uh consistent with that discussion. I don't know if there's anything else you wanted to present on that or uh the first that that and then following up if any board members have discussion or questions.
Sure, we gave you the topics last time. The, this is um the draft, actual draft of a letter that would go out to the governor as well as our legislative delegation. What we try to do is uh we identify the issue with a with a concern and then we bring the specifics to Northborough, how it impacts our community, why this is an important item for us. Just uh for those who may be viewing the two things, the uh Chapter ninety transportation funds, we're asking for additional money there to help us with all of the roadway sidewalk drainage infrastructure issues that the town is uh facing. Um, and then in various accounts of different uh mechanisms for this just general state aid as well as several accounts that are specific to the um, to the school department, uh, both the regional and the K-8 that are somewhat off book, you know, they're not direct, uh, necessarily direct state aid, but uh things like uh the special education circuit breaker, regional transportation reimbursements. Uh, making sure that uh they understand uh the rationale behind those. Um, so again, this is the draft or this uh, this current draft of the full letter to go out is on the webpage um under the board's packet. Uh, we did also, as we have uh in prior years, uh include on the off chance that the legislative delegation has an opportunity to include an earmark for us. We've included a few earmark projects, one being the fire station project. Uh, another is the Northborough Reservoir Dam Removal. Uh, Sidewalk Repair Project and the Assabill, Assabit Hill Drainage um Repair Project. So these are sort of um large uh projects that we've seen other commu- of a similar nature that we've seen other communities successfully obtain an earmark for. So um usually what happens is it's at the eleventh hour, we'll get a frantic call from our delegation member saying, hey, I've been asked by uh you know, by the chair, you know, if there's anything that I'd like to submit, doesn't mean you're going to get it. But if you don't ask, you definitely will not get it. Uh, so by having these sort of prepackaged and pre-canned, we literally can just send them again uh in a moment's notice. We were successful in the last round of getting fifty, we asked for three hundred thousand, but we got fifty thousand for the Lincoln Street covert, which again is is something. Um, but uh, you know, we've seen neighboring communities with a little bit more senior uh legislative delegation able to secure some significant earmarks for their communities, which has been a little disappointing for us. Uh, we're in a bit of a transition with our delegation. Um, but um, but it's important that they know if they have the opportunity to ask for one of these uh earmarks. Uh, potentially funding becomes available through a supplemental budget or state ARPA funding or whatever the case may be. Um, we want to make sure that they know these are the things that are priority for us and we'd like to see those included. So that is the um, that is the package. Uh, what we'd like to do as a standard at this time is if we get the blessing from the board, we'll uh, we'll send the letters out uh to our delegation and they will be in at your uh meeting on the thirteenth. And we'll use this um letter as a sort of a template to walk through the priorities of the community, allow them to tell us what they're working on and uh what their positions are uh on these various uh legislative priorities. And create hopefully a good, a good dialogue and some movement on the issues that are important to the Northborough community. So so what I'm looking for tonight is the uh go ahead nod that uh this is um uh acceptable for from the board's perspective to send out and uh and by doing so, uh, we'll have the chairman physically sign the document and uh and then we'll send it out to our delegation. We want to make sure we get it in their hands, you know, right away. So they have a couple of weeks at least to to review this. Uh, so we have a productive meeting. I'm happy to answer any questions anybody has regarding the contents of the letter.
Jason. Then Julian.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I would just like to um to ask about or to point out that uh historically the allocation for chapter ninety funding has been two hundred million over the last five years or so. And historically, we have suggested or requested that it be increased to three hundred million. Here in this letter, we're asking for it to be increased to three hundred thirty million. John, could you just give us a little background for the reason uh for that bump?
Yeah, I'm 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 happy to do that. As you know, uh, I presented this to the Mass Municipal Conference uh back in January. This is a top priority of the um of all the municipalities in the state. And essentially, the argument is they looked at two hundred million back when it was locked in and adjusted for inflation. And the reality is uh, that two hundred million really needs to be three hundred and thirty million uh to have the same buying power. So every year, as you know, the same allotment gets approved and every year through inflation and the normal cost of of increase in in the cost of doing business, it eats away at your real buying power, how many roads you can actually um uh repair or 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 work that you can get done. So it was um, it was an attempt uh by the Mass Municipal Association to really shame them into, hey, listen, not, not only we've been asking for this additional money because we need it, but it's been so long that 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 two hundred million in terms of adjustment for inflation and what you could buy really should be three hundred and thirty million. And so that's why you've seen that three hundred uh million number for so long, but the MMA is pushing the three thirty and we want to back that because that makes sense for us to to get behind that number as well. Uh, again, the cost of doing these projects only continues to increase and the state has um, has not adjusted. You know, that those chapter ninety funds since I believe like twenty twelve. So it's hurting us for sure.
Thank you.
Julian, you had your hand up.
Yeah, so um, as we talk about road repair. Um, last time, we did talk about mentioning e-commerce and the toll truck traffic takes on the town in terms of roads and safety and other things. And I noticed that that was eliminated. Could you explain why you decided to do that?
Uh, yeah, it wasn't eliminated so much as, as I recall the conversation. Um, we need a little, we need specificity and I'm not sure what exactly we're asking for. One of the things when we put this letter together, we try to uh focus on specific bills or initiatives, budgets or uh or things that we can can point to. That was sort of a, just a general discussion and we certainly can add something in, but I wasn't clear what that would be. Or my recollection was that that would be something that in terms of a general discussion uh with the legislative delegation when they came in, but I didn't have anything specific to add into this. There were no bills, there's no, so nobody submitted anything. So I didn't really know exactly what we were trying to get to. But if you want to submit something for a dig for the addition, we certainly can do that, but my understanding, my recollection of the meeting, it was that we were going to have a kind of a general discussion.
So, so my thought was that we could simply write up something about how towns in central Massachusetts, you know, are feeling the impact of these distribution centers and warehouses. And just to um keep our legislators aware of how it's affecting the towns and if there is anything coming up such as camera laws, which we talked about last time. Um, because I, I think in, I I I'm sorry, I didn't research this very well again. Um, but I think Senator Brownsberger might have a bill this year about you utilizing cameras. So y- you know, just so that when those bills come up, they are mindful of the fact that uh we are concerned about e-commerce and its effect on on the quality of life in Northborough.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I I think I agree with what John is saying about we don't have anything specific to include in the letter. But I agree with you, Julianne. Those are items that should be discussed. So um, we could add um, in the um, which is the category here. Yeah, there's local, local aid. I'm just looking through the letter. I'm looking for to see if there's a good place where we can include something and I'm not, I'm not seeing it because most of them are funding related and that's not really. Yeah, that's not funding. Um, and it's certainly not earmark section. I would, I would say let's maybe what you could do, Julianne, is send an email to our legislators and say, by the way, I'm going to bring this up in discussion. Um during the meeting. But because there wasn't a specific bill to call out um, and it wasn't directly funding related, it didn't make it into the letter. That doesn't mean it's not important to the board.
Okay, sure. Um and and also, um, actually towards the end, sometimes the the legislators will just say, is there anything else? You know, that you want to talk about. So could we all agree that that's another way that we could just, you know, keep them aware of our situation here? Okay.
Yes, tha- thank you for for adding that in, Julianne. It makes sense.
Thanks.
Okay. Did anyone else have anything that they want to comment on, add, subtract, change from the letter? Okay, is there a motion to send the letter?
Mister Chair, I move the board vote to approve the Legislative Priorities Letter.
Mister Chair, I move the board vote to approve the legislative priorities letter as presented. Second.
Motion's been made by Jason, seconded by Scott. Uh any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Uh Jason.
Aye.
Julianne.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
I also vote aye, vote is unanimous in favor. We've got our letter. Thank you very much for putting that together, John.
Very good. It'll be uh, as I said, the delegation is all confirmed. They'll be at your meeting on March thirteenth to discuss your priorities.
Excellent. Wasn't forward to that. Um next up on our agenda, we have um approval and memorandum of agreement for an easement at thirteen Church Street. Um so my understanding is Scott Sharpen here, you're going to be uh presenting this to us?
Yes. Certainly, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Um so as you're aware, the town put out an RFP. Uh back in January of twenty twenty-two for the old fire station located at thirteen Church Street. Um part of that RFP included um identification of a a possible rear lot line discrepancy. Um as the process went forward, um the abutting uh property owner, WCD. Forty-four West Main Street came to us and kind of re-highlighted the fact that he believes there's a discrepancy in the rear property line. Uh the town engaged a professional land surveyor. Um that work began in February and March of twenty twenty-two. In April, we received a f- uh formal uh confirmation. That our, the lot line that we thought was in error. Um was not, it was correct. So the abutting property um had the lot line presented correctly. Um the incorrect rear lot line dates back. So like nineteen ten, when that intersection was changed over and. Um Route twenty was relocated and when Church Street intersection moved. The property. On our deeds rotated. Which in actuality, it didn't. The front line just moved because that's where the roadway moved to. Um I can give you a graphic that kind of describes it. A little better. Um if I can share my screen. All right, let me see. Yes, um. So this is Church Street. This rectangle, the shaded rectangle is your fire station. WCD Garage Property is here. And if you see the red triangle. The. Left-hand line is where we thought the property line was. The right-hand line is where. The neighboring property owner thought it was and our surveyor confirmed. That it is actually the line that goes through the pump station. We have a sanitary sewer pump station. Kind of right in the middle of that red triangle. Um that pump station's been there since the. Early nineties. The um it is partially located on the butter's property. So we went forward with a. Land survey and easement development. The drawing you see in front of you now. Is the recordable easement drawing. The red rectangle you see identified as proposed easement A. Here. Um is the is the easement we're here to discuss. That WCD Garage, the the owner of forty-four West Main Street would be granting to the town. Um the lower rectangle you see that's in light green, that is is an easement that'll be um required when. And if thirteen Church Street gets uh. Um conveyed over to a private developer. That easement is for municipal access to the pump station. As is the red one that WCD Garage would be granting to us. Let me stop that. So when the research was done and the drawings were complete, um we transmitted it over to the property owner of WCD in July. And he processed it through his attorney, negotiations um went uh were ongoing from late July through. Uh late October. Um a verbal agreement was reached in the beginning of November. With the uh with the neighboring property owner, that agreement includes. Um the town providing a municipal sewer stub. Within that easement to the pro- to the easement line, so the neighboring property could connect to sanitary sewer. They're currently served by a septic system. And the sewer main on West Main Street. Is on the other side of the road by the Town Common and that's under eight inches of concrete and four lanes of traffic. Um not a very easy connection to make. Uh much easier to go through the backyard and that's where a septic system is anyway. The other piece of the negotiation was a waiver of the privilege fee. So in Northborough, in order for. Um a a new customer to connect into the sewer system. There's a mandatory privilege fee of nine thousand one hundred dollars um for that connection. We went before the Water Sewer Commission. On January thirty-first. And the commissioners voted unanimously to waive that privilege fee of ninety-one hundred dollars. So the um. The town and the neighbor are in agreement on the on the terms. Of the um of the uh conveyance of the easement, we give them a pipe to connect to, we waive the privilege fee. He or she connects into the pipe when they're ready to. Um Town Council drafted up the uh MOA you see in your packets. It went through Town Council, it went through um the Butters Council, it went through the Butters Mortgage Council. Um back and forth a handful of times, um as well as the easement language and. Um as of the end of last week, um everybody was in agreement. So uh if you have any questions uh in detail about the the MOA or. Um the the history I just gave you, I'm I'm happy to, happy to answer them.
If if I may through the chair, uh again. Uh dealing with real property and easements requires town meeting approval. So uh but one of the things that uh we've been working on is try to get this memorandum of agreement as. Uh Scott Sharpen here, DBW Director just said. So it will require town meeting action, but in the interim, the MOA will allow all the parties to move forward. And the town does have an RFP out and a potential uh private redevelopment of that. Of that parcel. And so this agreement uh structure would allow us to to move forward and take that into consideration. Pending the uh the final easement acceptance at town meeting.
Thank you, Scott and John. Any questions from the board? Uh we'll just say I'm very, very happy that this is. Reached this this can level of conclusion. I know it took a lot of work and certainly a lot of time. So I'm, I'm very pleased to see this before us.
It's a lot of work for a tiny sliver of property, but yeah, but it but important if it was your property, it would be important to you.
It's uh it's important for both parties. It's important because it's WCD's property interest and certainly the town's property interest. Uh given the fact that we've got a pump station there.
Right.
Okay, we do have uh one hand up in the audience, uh Lisa Sully, I will. Well, I'm trying to let you in, but I don't have the magic button. Uh Chief Parenti, if. You are there.
I am.
There we go. All right, Lisa, if you could just identify yourself and tell us what's on your mind.
Evening, Lisa Maselli, thirteen Church Street. Um on the picture. That had both the pump house and the easement in red and green. Um just a couple of questions. You said that that West Street is too difficult to get the sewer connection through. How will the, how will the sewer connection be made? Imagine to Church Street and would it go through the easement by the pump house or? How would that happen?
You happy to answer that, Mr. Chairman?
Um before we do, Lisa, did you have any other? Comments or questions or it, I'd rather just um hand it off to to whoever to answer those questions in total.
All right, and the second one was again, looking at the, looking at the drawing, um. I would assume then with the easement, um. The line changes of a lot line. Close closer to um the existing brick building now, not the pump house, but the fire station. So it's a little bit smaller lot, I imagine, than it was listed as. Um and an easement such as that with the pump house, then. There's no building or anything that could go on that easement. You you could use it as a driveway, but you couldn't use it as a parking lot or anything, right?
Okay, uh thank you very much, Lisa. We'll take care of uh answering those questions now.
Right, uh through the chair. The uh the first question about the sewer connection, um. So the facility, the building's septic system is in the rear. The sewer stub that the town will provide will be within that easement to the limit of the easement. So at the sewer pump station, there's a wet well, there's a uh a gravity pipe that enters the wet well. Um we would be putting in a new s- new sewer stub. That accesses the uh the gravity main that goes to the property, to the easement property line. Um there would be no work beyond that. Um. The uh end of the pipe would be identified with a witness and um. A swing tie, so there'd be an Azbil fort and the expectation is that the butter. When he um just continues using a septic system, just extends that inlet pipe from the septic system to the stub. Um at the rear of his property, which is at the 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 edge of the easement. The other question regarding the um the use of the uh easement within the thirteen Church Street parcel, uh that green rectangle. Um it can't be paved, it can't have parking, there can be no permanent structures on it. Um there are a lot of utilities under there within within that easement. We have a gas main, we have a sewer force main leaving, we have a sewer gravity main going in. Underground electric and underground communication. Um there is a lot of pipes underneath that that easement. Um so you can have parking, you can have pavement, you just cannot have a permanent structure.
And through the chair, that easement has been known all along, so that that piece hasn't changed anything.
Great, thank you. Um any other questions, uh Jason?
Uh yeah, just for uh for purposes of the minutes, I think the commenter mistakenly announced her address as thirteen Church Street, which is the subject property we're talking about. I believe the correct address for the commenter is thirteen Maple Street.
I didn't, I didn't catch that, but if so, um I I'm sure I can. Adjust that in the making. Let's thank, thank you for pointing that out. Okay, any other comments or questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mister Chairman. I move the board vote to approve the sewer pump station access and sewer service installation memorandum of agreement. Parentheses MOA, close parentheses, between the town and WCD Garage Incorporated. For the town property at thirteen Church Street. And to authorize the town administrator to execute the MOA on behalf of the town. Together with the water and sewer commissioners and with the final form of the MOA subject to approval by town council.
Second.
Motion made by Julianne, seconded by Scott. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Uh uh Jason.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Julianne.
Aye.
I also vote aye, vote is unanimous in favor. We have an MOA. Thank you very much. Um. Scott Sharpen here and John Kader and everybody else who was involved in putting that together.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very, very happy to see this concluded. Um. Next up on our agenda, we have discussion and approval for the town administrator recruitment RFP. John, give us a little guidance through this, please.
Sure, I'd be happy to. Uh so at your last meeting, we discussed uh issuing an RF, uh issuing a uh solicitation to hire a consultant. A couple of different avenues uh that you can go down. Ultimately, uh we chose the RFP process and the RFP stands for Request for. Proposals. It's a specific legal process uh under thirty, chapter thirty B, the procurement law. That allows you to take into consideration uh not just price, but the qualifications of the consultants. Uh one of the things, you could do this by quote. Uh but I imagine the board probably wouldn't want to hire the low bid consultant. That's probably not your priority. Um but if 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 that's a different process you'd like, we can go revisit that. So this is drafted as an RFP. Uh took a little bit uh to put together, um but essentially you can see the uh beginning on page four is the scope of work. Um. And it runs through all the things that the consultant will help you do. Uh the consultant. Uh we did add in here that for the consultant to assist with uh trying to find some interim uh town administrators for uh for the board. Um but really, it starts with uh working with a uh screening committee that the uh select board would create. And then the consultant would work at that screening committee, then to put together uh uh. Avenues for public input. Um it would put together uh basically marketing materials for the town, describing the community um. And uh describing the position and uh and the process. Uh so the consultant would work with the screening committee essentially to go through. Uh part of one, one of the reasons why you hire a consultant is a very difficult type market right now for. For town managers and town administrators aren't a lot out there. Um so one of the things that the consultant is specifically hired to do is to is tasked to. Is to uh find qualified folks and and generate interest. Sometimes. You'll find uh an administrator or manager isn't necessarily in the market for a new job, but if they get a phone call. Uh and a nudge, you know, they could be persuaded to apply for a position. Um so uh that whole process would go through the screening committee. Following the creation of these marketing materials, uh uh the consultant working with the screening committee and the board. Would have several public input sessions about the characteristics, uh traits and qualities of a, the administrator that you'd be looking for. Um all that gets put together. Ultimately, uh the screening committee then would uh shortlist the applicants. Uh screen them as implied in the name and send uh typically three, no more than four. Applicants forward for the interview, a finalist interview with the select board. Uh and then uh part of that process between the screening committee level and the select board's interview. Would be uh background reference checks uh that would be done, uh and that would be handled by the consultant. So that when you are contemplating the finalists, you would have all the information about those individuals that you could obtain. Uh and then the select board would then make a uh a decision and um and hopefully uh enter contract negotiations and hire that individual. So this RFP is for the, it just so we're clear, for the consultant to assist the town with that process. Marketing the town, drumming up people who would potentially be applicants. And then assisting and sitting with the screening committee and the select board. Through that process, guiding and advising you along the way. Uh and a big part of it too is, as I said, doing the background, the reference checks, uh things of that nature. And again, it's a uh an independent third party. Uh who would be assisting you through that uh through that process. So that's what would be achieved by the document that you have in front of you. In terms of a timeline. Uh we would see that uh we're required by law to have a two-week notice requirement. Uh published in a newspaper in uh combines, which is the state uh advertisement uh. Uh publication. Uh so the advertisement would run on March second in the uh Telegram and Gazette. The proposals will be due March fifteenth. Again, this is all tentative, subject to the board's discussion and approval. Uh so if you do March fifteenth, and then the recommendation would be that in order to keep the process moving and not wait to your next meeting. Uh we'd recommend that the board schedule a brief meeting either on March fifteenth or sixteenth. To either interview or to make your decision about the consultant. Uh. In all reality, there's three consultants that do all of the recruitments across the state, so you're likely to hear from those three. And uh depending on how elaborate the selection, you can bring them in to your meeting on the fifteenth or sixteenth. Conduct interviews. Um or you can, if you feel comfortable, based off the uh. Proposals that are submitted, uh you could move forward and and make the award from there, so. So that's the uh RP uh and the schedule in a nutshell. I'm happy to answer any questions. The the scope that's included in here is pretty standard, so this is what any town going through this has roughly, you know, this. Type of a scope of services. Um. Uh and again, just to be clear, the creation of a screening committee, the appointment of a screening committee, that's, you know, that that's the discretion of the board. So however you want that makeup to be uh is fine. So I can answer any questions?
Actually, yeah, e- exactly what you just said, on the uh on the scope of work. Um the second item down. Consultant shall assist with the formation of a. For every screening committee to include in that it it details um some formation. I'd rather have the consultant that we bring on give us a recommendation as to um. The formation of that committee.
So the committee can take whatever form the the board would like. You're not beholden to, you're not beholden to this. It's just in general. You know, they would have uh members of the select board, school committee. I know people worked up senior staff, well, you might want to have the superintendent sit on that committee, that as was the case in a number of communities as seniors. Yeah, but it's open to whatever you want.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, all those i- in a general s- sense make make sense. My suggestion would be we just cap that bullet. At consultant shall assist with formation of a screening committee period and just strike the rest. Um so that there. There isn't a detail or commitment of what it would be like until we hear from that consultant, because I.
That's fine, I'll make that change then.
Okay. Um and I think my only other suggestion, I really do appreciate you taking this on. Um you're, since you're you're vacating this role, you could say, nope, it's all up to you guys and uh but you're you're helping us through that transition, which we truly appreciate. Um since these are. Um, since these are board decisions, I would ask that any. Comments or questions that you get from potential consultants as well as responses, maybe copy Julianne and myself as the chair and vice chair. Um, just so we're in the loop on everything.
I'm happy to bow out in the middle of it altogether.
I I honestly, I'm not asking you to.
I'm not looking for any extra work on the way out the door.
I'm I'm not suggesting you do that. I I appreciate you uh dealing with that, also that you you can keep the process legit. Um, so.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, generally, the the questions are very basic. Uh, you know, there's a snowstorm. When do we, when do we submit that type of stuff? But yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, um, and I assume that you you will have. If not already done so, contacted those three or four consultants that do this sort of work and make sure this RFP. Goes directly to them so they don't accidentally find out about it.
Oh, we're gonna make these changes and send it to them tomorrow morning. I just wanted the board to feel comfortable with the with the scope that's included.
Fantastic. Uh, comments or questions from the board? Julianne and then Scott.
Um, yeah, so I I tend to agree with Mitch about just keeping the um. The screening committee. Uh, a little more vague than than what it is here, so that we can discuss it with the consultant, but. Um, who appoints the screening committee?
We we do.
The select board appoints the screening committee.
Okay, just to clear that up. Thank you.
Yeah, so it's at some subsequent meeting, we would decide what that committee would look like. Um, and I've I've seen all sorts of formations of this. Um, all all sorts of different ways. There's no legal standard. Um, there's a lot of commonality among general ways to do it, but I've seen it done a number of different ways. So we'll have that discussion. Um, with input from the consultant. Uh, and then form that committee. But they they would be responsible to us.
Okay, so just to follow up on that, since I'm on the interview subcommittee, I think it would be preferable to have this committee go before the entire board. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, it's a different, it's a it's a different process.
Yeah, okay.
We would decide exactly what to do as as a full board, but that's a good, that's a that's a valid point, and I I agree with you. Um, Scott.
Okay, thanks.
Oh, I'm sorry, Julianne, you're done? Yeah, okay, Scott, you had your hand up just after Julie ended.
Yeah, thanks. I just wanted to say, you know, thanks for the work and and not just putting this together, but bringing it into a full discussion tonight. I know at our prior meeting, there's some discussion that in the interest of time to get something drafted, get it out the door. And I had asked something for the full review of the board, so just wanted to thank, say thanks for for doing that, so we could take a look at it and offer some adjustments.
Again, this is your process, so you need to feel comfortable with it, so. Um, uh, I'm sorry, I don't want to jump in here, but through the chair, the only piece um that we do want to talk about tonight is that the schedule. Because we'll want to let, if we're going to do interviews, or we're going to schedule a meeting, we want to, I think you want to get that uh stake in the ground.
Okay. Um.
So again, proposals will be due under this schedule at two o'clock on um March fifteenth, the Ides of March. But um, uh, so either that evening or the next uh next day. I'll be, I have an appropriations committee that evening. I I don't even know if you want me in attendance or not. It's entirely up to you. I'm. This is needs to be the boards and the community's process. I'm happy to help in any way I can, but I'm not inserting myself in this at all. It's really what you guys want to do.
I would suggest the sixteenth if all of us are available. Um, to give us at least a day to digest that information. Um, we have to obviously go on an assumption about our member who couldn't be with us tonight.
What time would you like to have that meeting?
Seven o'clock, is that work for folks?
Okay.
Okay, Jason.
Does the board? I'm sorry, I'm just trying to flush this out a little bit. Do you have any preference in terms of do you do you want to? If we want to conduct interviews, you probably should let, you know, we're gonna need to communicate that to uh to the um consultants.
I think we should plan that if. Yeah, because we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to have a discussion to decide on. You know, we we liked Jane best, and I don't even know if any of the people are named Jane. I'm just, you know, making up a name. Um. And let's not even have interviews and just hire Jane, because we wouldn't have a meeting. We would need a couple of, we would need two meetings. To sort that through. So I think I think we just plan on interviews. Eh, open meeting law question. We would not be able to post. The names of people who we are interviewing forty-eight hours in advance, because we wouldn't have their applications in hand. Until twenty-four hours in advance.
Hopefully that gentleman will let that one slide.
You could post it, interview, interview of consultants, but uh, yeah, I mean, you don't, you're not gonna have to necessarily know who they are. Um. I mean, we'll know who has requested the RFP.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, reality is, we probably know who they are, but. Um, I guess I guess the out would be, we wouldn't know forty-eight hours in advance. So. Yeah, all right, I'm I'm o- I'm okay with it if others are.
I agree with you, Mitch, in terms of planning to have interviews. And then if for some reason we'd not need it, it's easier to say they're not needed than to then try to figure out a way to put them back on the schedule, so.
Yeah.
Let's let's plan for interviews on the sixteenth.
Sixteen, seven P M works for three members here. Um, I. I tend to think John isn't needed for that, but I could be convinced otherwise. Um. I I I have a conversation that I think I want to have with John separate from the meeting about about that related things. So. I'm. Yeah.
If it's on the sixteenth, I'm available. You don't need to make the decision tonight, okay? Whatever whatever you guys need, however, I can be helpful, really. Okay, so we're gonna get it out tomorrow. The modification to the screen committee, the due date is uh fifteenth on at two P M. Uh, the we'll post the meeting uh including potential interviews for uh March sixteenth at seven P M. And uh and we will mail out, we'll make these changes and we'll mail it out at least to the three consultants that I'm aware of that do ninety-nine point nine percent of these recruitments in the Commonwealth. And then anybody else who might throw their hat in, but you really want somebody, my 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 one, two cents to you is 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 the, you're gonna want somebody that does this in Massachusetts. Because it's a unique, it's a unique environment. Um, and if you're looking to get somebody potentially who has mass experience. You know, the someone from Mass is gonna know those people best, but again, you. You'll you'll get what you get and you'll work through that process, I'm sure it'll be fine. Okay.
Okay, uh, any other comments or discussions? Not um. Did request a motion on this, John? Um. If you want. Yep, if you want.
I would say it would be as amended.
As amended, yes.
Before I do that, Mister Chair, there's a hand in the audience.
Oh, I did not realize that. Thank you for pointing that out. Kerry Martin, I'm bringing you in. Kerry, what's on your mind?
Hi, Kerry Martin, sixteen Hemlock Drive. I'm just a quick comment um uh with my planning board hat on. A- as the board um considers the selection committee, I would just. Uh, want the planning board to be up for a consideration on that committee and would appreciate that uh if that could be the case. So anyway, thanks for your work on this.
Great, thank you, Kerry.
Hi, Mister Chair, I move the board. Board vote to approve the town administrator recruitment RFP as amended. Uh, with the submission deadline of March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three at two P M.
Second.
Should made by Scott, seconded by Jason. Uh, any other discussion? All those in favor, uh, Scott?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
I also vote aye, vote is unanimous in favor. Okay, great. Thank you very much. On that one, uh, next up, we have reports. Uh, let's see, uh, Jason, do you have any reports tonight?
Uh, no report this evening, Mister Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Julianne, any reports this evening?
Yes, thank you, Mister Chairman. Um, okay, so first of all, Westboro is having another um. Environmental Action Fair. This is uh the the last one that I attended was really impressive. There's all kinds of vendors there. If people are interested in putting solar panels or um heat pumps in their house. And and there were students and um it's it's an excellent thing to attend. Um, so obviously I have conversations now and then with Pete Dunbeck, who is head of the. Westboro Sustainable Committee, and that's the committee that's actually hosting this uh this fair. And um. I I um have mentioned this in the past, I I would like an an agenda item coming up at some point. To discuss having a similar committee in our town. Um, and Pete Dunbeck would be very happy to come and talk to us and tell us all the benefits of having such a committee. And how they got started, so um just something to think about. And um. You know, spring, believe it or not, even though we're having snow, is will be around the corner and Cultural Council is having an event on the Common in June. And we discussed this a few months ago about putting up signs at Blake Street. And the other little parking lot by the War Memorial, um, so people know where public parking is. And um I I would just ask that that be done hopefully before the events start on on the town common. And um. That's it for me tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Julianne. Scott, any reports?
Uh, yes, two items uh from the groundwater advisory committee, uh, although we just reviewed the warrant summary. Uh, which include those proposed zoning bylaw changes. As John mentioned, the planning board has continued their public hearing on them until uh March seventh. On the proposed change that dissolves the groundwater advisory committee is somewhat contradictory in its current form. So I plan to discuss that at a public hearing. Uh, with the removal of the groundwater advisory committee, the implication then is that the applications will be. On directed to each of the boards and commissions. Uh, however, doesn't provide enough time um for each board and commission to assess. Me potentially call the applicants before that body deliberate, provide written comments back to the special permit granting authority. Um, this is kind of why the groundwater advisory committee was formed, right, to provide a streamlined, one-stop. Uh, for those reviews where the associated disciplines from those boards and committees could bring into perspective. So uh despite the rationale to simplify the process, uh, the current uh format for that on. Could be interpreted that it makes it four times more complicated, so I plan to bring that up uh and represent uh this board at the public hearing uh on the seventh. From the financial planning uh committee, uh, they've completed their cycle of work for this year. Uh, they've resulted in their recommendations on the capital projects that we uh reviewed in the warrant summary. Uh, in their final report, uh, which will appear in the town meeting booklet, uh, is the following paragraph. The committee continues to recommend the release of ARPA funding for the fire engine and tight tank, which would result in no additional tax impacts to residents. The committee also recognizes that the ARPA funds were designed to be used quickly during the pandemic. Which is why they may be released solely by vote of the board of selectmen and do not require town meeting approval. However, given that the state of emergency is over, it is concerning that the board of selectmen has chosen to ignore the unanimous votes of both the financial planning committee and the appropriations committee. With regard to how the ARPA funds are used. The committee is concerned that the selectmen's actions are essentially forcing town meeting. To authorize debt for public safety and environmental compliance projects for which there is no discretion. While at the same time holding two point six two million inavailable ARPA funds for some future discretionary projects that the town will not be required to vote on. If the fire engine and tight tank projects were funded with ARPA, it would still leave one point two five million remaining ARPA funds for grant seed funding and other discretionary projects. The committee believes the financially conservative approach would be to use the ARPA funds for projects that are immediately needed. And ask the voters to support future discretionary projects once they are known and appropriately defined. That ends my report.
Thank you, Scott. Uh, I have no reports tonight, uh, continuing a long uh execution of a cemetery deed. Someone like to make a motion?
Mister Chair. Allow me to find my motion. It I should know this by heart. I move the board vote to execute cemetery deed one, one, six, five.
Second.
Motion made by Jason, seconded by Scott. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Julianne?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
I also vote aye, vote is unanimous in favor. Um. Does anyone have any other business before we have our final public comment and go into executive session? Hearing none. Is there any public comment for anyone that would like to say anything? We have Lisa Moselli. Lisa, what's on your mind?
Hi, Lisa Moselli, thirteen Maple Street. I used to live on Church Street myself, so sorry. Uh, I'm I didn't want to make a comment about town meeting and um and advertising for town meeting. Since we're always looking for more than just the two hundred and fifty to possibly three hundred people coming in. I think that having any and more information out there at a longer period of time is uh is worth whatever small expense it might be. And I do know that there are many towns that I have seen where they actually send in advance. The uh the warrant with uh if you vote this way, this is what it means. If you vote that way, this is what it means. And it helps the people know in advance before they get to town meeting really what's going on. Because we have so many new people, young people coming in to um the meeting, not understanding. What it is that they're voting on. I think it's a great uh a great item to consider. Because ultimately, these are the people that make the decision for the money that's spent. For the the bylaws that are passed or removed. And how the town is run and how their tax dollars are spent. So I don't believe we should, we should make it uh as little as possible. We'll leave it up to them to find out about it. I think we should make it a greater path and more information to them in advance. So thank you for letting me express that.
Thank you, Lisa. Okay. I see no other hands up. In which case I will entertain a motion to go into executive session. Someone like to make that motion?
Yeah, thank you, Mister Chair. I move the board vote to enter into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, subsection three, collective bargaining. Update on negotiations with the firefighter and police officer unions. Due to the chair's determination that a discussion regarding these matters in an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the position of the board.
Second.
Motion made by Scott, seconded by Jason. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Scott?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
I also vote aye, vote is unanimous in favor. We are entering executive session, do not return into public session at eight oh eight P M. Thank you very much.